Lindahl or something.
I'm gonna be here for a while, I hope not. Didn't look like that big of a.
I will call a meeting order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Congressman Waller's?
Yes.
Sollby?
Yes.
Miller?
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Hees.
Yes. Uh, first off, I would like to make a motion to add an item B under petitions, requests and communications, sale of old Christmas lights.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Citizen comments, if anyone would like to approach the council, now's a good time. We have no public hearings tonight. Reading an approval of September twenty eighth minutes.
I will move approval of the September twenty eighth regular min- meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And we have the same nine twenty eight condensed version.
I'll move on the condensed version, another minutes.
I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda, I will move approval of the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the September transit report, gambling report from the Legion, raffle license report from the VFW auxiliary, uh, August eighteenth tree board minutes, August eleventh library board minutes, and application for exemperment for Assamson Church.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or questions on any of the items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Carried. We have under petitions, requests and communications, we have a motion to change the name of the senior center to community center, uh, senior center, community center to Morris Community Center.
Yeah, I think that came up last meeting, somebody made a comment about that and so I, we just figured we'd throw it on there
and see what you wanna do with that.
Makes sense, and we can do some signage or whatever.
Yep.
Oh, I'll move on the motion to change the name of the senior center to the community center, to slash community center, to Morris Community Center.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We have the added, um, sale of old Christmas lights. Um, we're gonna sell them on a bid, or?
Yeah, we use an auction site to sell them.
Okay, you think that'll be something that, like, some smaller towns would be interested in?
It could be, I don't know if anybody asked about them, um, from time to time, people ask about stuff, uh, or park board's gonna talk about the playground set at East Side Park, I've already had three people ask me about possibly buying the old set, but, you know, we, we have to go through a process to sell stuff and, and, uh, so I don't know if anybody asked to buy them or not, I think somebody might be interested in them.
Okay. I'm good with that, I'll make a motion to sell the old Christmas lights in the normal process.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Ordinance and resolution, we have a resolution approving a lease with the Minnesota Department of Vehicle Services for the Morris Community Center.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we got the lease right, if it was the community center, not the senior citizen center, but as approached by DVS, uh, about trying to find a place in Morris to do the driver's licensing, uh, the state of Minnesota's gonna start cranking them up now. Um, during COVID, they shut down most of their sites, so it's my understanding people had to go to, as far as Marshall, to try to find a, a license exam for sixteen year olds to get a driver's license and do the road test and, and, uh, uh, I believe the last, they, they were at the Armory, but because of the changes that have happened with COVID and the state and stuff, um, that's not an option for them. Um, all of a sudden, we had the community center, it's open. Uh, what they need it for is two days a month, uh, the second and fourth Fridays is when they do testing, would do testing in Morris starting in January. Uh, they only do, um, um, reservations for up to fifteen people, so it's not like there's gonna be a mass crowd of people that are gonna be barging in here. It's, it's pretty well controlled and, and, uh, scheduled and, and I see it, uh, two different ways. One way is we're renting out part of the space, help pay for it, but, uh, the other way is this is a service to the community and we wanna make sure that we have one of these sites in Morris for people to go to. So I'm recommending that we, we do a lease with them, it's not a lot of money, it's, you know, fifty dollars a day, uh, two days, days a month, uh, they, they did wanna lock in for three and a half years with it and, uh, I talked to, uh, Robert in the kitchen, 'cause he's doing meals for Meals on Wheels and he doesn't have any issues with it, um, dealing with them and the space works out good for him, so it's, it looks like it's a pretty good deal for us here.
And they've, uh, they've taken a look at the facilities and the, and, uh, like the tables and stuff that we have and that's gonna be okay?
Yep, yeah, and then there is a back office, the, at, at most, they might have a little cart, uh, that they might lock in the back office, uh, which is fine with them, but they did come here and take a look at the, the site. They've looked at the library before and then, uh, actually before the Armory, I think they're in the Eagles.
Yep.
You know, and were testing in there, but that didn't really work out very well for them, they didn't like the combination of doing your driver's licensing in a bar type environment. Especially if you're trying to get your DDU BI license back. That's exactly what the person said, but, but this is a good use of the building.
Yeah, for sure.
Before, you know.
So they're just gonna use the?
The dining room area, yep. And then, you know, they'll, they'll probably be hanging out in the lobby and they know that transit's here and, and, um, probably the biggest issue is that, you know, because transit's here, you know, they, they have to wear masks and stuff within the transit operation and so we'll just work it out with who the inspectors are, you know, as to what happens with transit people coming in and out. But yeah, it works, it actually works very well for them.
Good, good, yeah, and if you pass the test, it's just down the block?
Well, yeah, you just go right across the street.
Well, it's a service that's needed, we have the facility that sits here, so I will move on that resolution approving a lease with the Minnesota Department of Vehicle Services for the Morris Community Center.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Okay, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Sollby?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Miller?
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Hees?
Yes. We have a resolution adopting assessment for current services.
Yeah, so this would be the last utility bill for, uh, it says Beth's Northland Inn, but it's the Morris Grand Hotel. Uh, and, uh, this would be to put it on taxes, I'm not quite sure how this is gonna work because, uh, uh, of the, the legal actions that are currently taking place with regards to that property, but uh, this is what we do and, and we'll bring it up to the courthouse and file it then.
So, didn't we have this?
We had, we had another one, we've been, so they get, they get billed every two months and so then we had the previous bill and we brought it to you already because they didn't pay it and then this is the last one.
That's a, that's two months worth of bill?
Uh, yep.
And you have to wait till it's done in order to put it on the ballot?
Yeah, of course.
Sure. But this is the last one, it's done?
This is the last one, it's done and just to maybe a quick update on, um, I'm actually, I traded a couple of emails with the attorney for the bank, so it was sold on a sheriff's sale uh, because the, the mortgage was under default and then the bank got it and then the bank, um, un- under the rules of the, the sheriff's sale and the foreclosure, there's a time period that they had to wait to let the mortgage holder possibly come back in and pay off the mortgage and, and get it back. Uh, but then they left and so then the bank, what the bank did, and you might have noticed, somebody might have noticed in the paper that there's an auction sale that was advertised for that property, which I thought was kinda interesting and that was last, last Monday, a week ago Monday, uh, that, um, they had an auction sale, nobody showed up for the auction sale of the property, but yesterday supposedly, um, they went back to the bankruptcy, the, uh, the court to get final disposition on the mortgage and then they're gonna list it for sale. So that's really where that property is at, the bank's gonna get the final ability to try to sell that property and then, uh, the previous owners will be out of it. So that's why I say I'm not quite sure how this, 'cause it was sold back to the bank, whether or not they have any responsibility, it just depends on how the tax system works with regards to the special assessment.
Uh, Blaine, that work we're gonna be doing over in that area, is that gonna affect the new owners of this at all?
Uh, no.
No, 'cause there's really no tax implications or costs?
They're not part of that.
Okay. I'll move on the resolution adopting assessment for current services.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Congressman Miller?
Ellison?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Sollby?
Yes.
Mayor Hees?
Yes. City managers' report.
Uh, let me, I'll just touch on a couple of things here, actually the solar projects, I, I had an update, uh, today uh, on that, um, they're, the Otter Tail Power's coming down tomorrow at ten o'clock to meet with, uh, Blue Horizon to do the, uh, system check on the liquor store and then they'll come over to this building and do the system check here. If everything checks out and works, then Otter Tail will actually put the meter in, um, because they're asked to have, uh, they have a special meter for the solar systems and then the project will be pretty much up and running, uh, other than we'll try to coordinate with the city council and all the Otter Tail Power, Blue Horizon, everybody to do some kind of event to try to kick, kick it off. Um, at the same time, they're just finishing up the library, I think all the panels have been placed up there, they're wiring them in, doing the, the final wiring on that and then, uh, as I indicated, the, the, the roofers came. We had no idea the roofers were coming, but the roofers showed up last week on Monday, uh, and city hall's roof is just about, they're just doing the final trim work on, on the edges and stuff like that right now, but, uh, the new roof was on during the big rainstorm, so I did a walk through the city hall and there wasn't any, any evidence whatsoever of any leak in there, uh, but, but now it has a white roof and actually it was kinda interesting when I was walking over, over here to meet with, uh, a Blue Horizon guy, um, I, I scared, scared the heck out of me, a guy had a big blowtorch and he was heating up the edge on it 'cause they're doing the seals on it and, and I said, "You scared me," and I said, "It looks like you're doing the final work," and he goes, "Yeah, on a black roof, we normally wouldn't have to do this because the sun would've heated it up enough to seal it, but we wanna make sure it's sealed and on the white ones, they have to heat them up to actually get them sealed down the right way." You know, so it's, it, it was a little bit different for him doing the work. But the next step is they're gonna go from the library over to city hall and they're gonna put the, the solar on city hall. So that should be started this next week and then, uh, we'll get that all hooked up and they should be done with them. Um, sidewalk, sidewalk cuttings, um, been done on the original stuff and then they'll come back and do the new stuff that we ordered up, um, including, uh, West Fifth Street, so I did, took, I took my bicycle out and I rode, uh, East Seventh Street and it's amazing how they can smooth out those bad edges, but we have to come back and do some work on, on dips and, and where the trees are pushing up some sidewalk stuff, the city crews will do that. Um, we had Burlington Northern, uh, that project, uh, we're just waiting on the concrete people for Riley Brothers to come in and do the curb and gutter and sidewalk and then they'll do the, all the roadwork leading up to the crossing and then, uh, BN will come in, do the crossing either this fall or next spring. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter when they do it, 'cause everything else will be done and we got a bid opening on, on, uh, the Yankee Ridge Road Waterline Project next Tuesday, so we'll know what that price tag's gonna be and then sometime in Mar- in, uh, November, you're gonna get a special assessment hearing on, uh, next year's project. So, any questions you might have?
On that West Sixth Railroad Crossing, they're not actually gonna change the crossing, they're just gonna do the signals, is that correct?
They're gonna.
'Cause that's the best crossing in town.
Um, yeah, they're not gonna do any of the work on the actual crossing, but it's, it's, they, they have to, they have to rearrange the signals, you know, because the one signal, um, there's gonna be a sidewalk on the north side coming behind it and actually it was interesting, 'cause their signal box is not necessarily in compliance with BN rules for where they place these signal boxes, they're supposed to be with all their mechanical stuff, uh, electronic stuff and, and so then they're working all that out, they, they, they can do, the, the guy that's in charge of the project actually comes out of Wisconsin, so he was here for the pre-con on it, uh, pre-construction meeting on it and, um, the biggest thing is that we gotta rearrange the, the, uh, parking lot, uh, curbing and stuff to match up the right way so that they can put in the regulation crossing arms, 'cause it's really not regulation the way it is now.
Good.
He said they are paying out more money for cities that wanna close crossings because they.
Just a hint again?
Just a hint, well, we, you know, when you think about it, we have a crossing every block. We have one on, on, uh, Fifth, on Sixth, on Seventh, so there's three crossings within that two-block area, which is not necessarily common, you know, for, for cities, but it's there, they're gonna, they're gonna do it, so everybody's happy.
Does Benson still have three?
Uh, I think they do.
Those first two blocks, I think they do too.
Yeah.
Been a few meetings since we talked about the floral bullet, any update at all, Blaine?
Um, yeah, we, we actually, uh, Cheryl Coon's working on it with, uh, SEIC, you know, and, and that's the best I can tell you, um, we're, we're really, you know, I've been asked a couple times, where, where's the city at on this, we're in the same spot we were in before, where we have two choices. One of them is to try to make a deal with him to get out of that building and then get ownership of it so we can tear it down, uh, which he's not ready to do yet, uh, the other one is to take an action, to go to court, to get it, uh, the authority to condemn it and then force him out of there, uh, uh, but one of the things that just happened last week was, uh, all of his excess stuff got boxed up and hauled out to the, uh, fairgrounds, um, for, I don't know if they had the auction yet or not, but they're gonna auction off all of his excess stuff that was in there, so, um, they, there were some people that helped facilitate him getting his stuff out of there, you know, but he's still in there, he's still, I saw the, the flower truck was delivering yesterday, I think, flowers there. Um, I have not gone back and talked to him since Cheryl has been working on this, so the next step for me is to go back and I know they talked about a place for him to go live, you know, because he, he, he would qualify, I think, for, for housing, to be able to go live somewhere. Um, there was one other place that was looked at, uh, but, you know, he's not gonna move into another place and do floral business, it's just not gonna work for him. So, but the one thing, when our, we actually helped move that stuff out of his place, so the public works guys helped, but we will not go back in that building, you know, because there's, uh, you know, I, we had a, an issue where I think part of the flooring collapsed, you know, so it's like we will not go back in that building and he should not be in that building, so, so we'll see what happens.
Do we have a drop dead date that we're just gonna say, "Nope, we're done with this," I mean?
It's totally up to you what you wanna do, if we wanna go to court, then put a motion on the table to go to court and we'll have a judge rule that he needs to be out of there. You know, but he's not willing to make a deal to, to turn the building over to us. You know, we're, it, it's just, you're, you're in that kinda catch twenty-two situation where you, you force that guy out of his building, you know, it's his building, it's his responsibility, you know, if that building fell in tomorrow and killed somebody, it's not our liability as a city because we're not liable to go in there and force him to do something, but at the same time, you know, uh, we do have the authority, um, to try to get a court to rule that that place should be condemned. Yeah, and it's not an issue of whether or not it should be condemned, it would be nothing to have the building inspector write a letter that the property should be condemned, you know, and I can't imagine a court would not agree with that, you know, 'cause all you have to do is, I, I don't know that I would walk back in there, you know, and we had that, what, three inches of rain this last weekend and that couldn't have been good for that place. You know, part of the back end is falling off again.
Well, winter's just around the corner too, so, you know, we're gonna get some, some, the weight of snow and so forth, so just wondering if it would make sense to go down that path to get it condemned, you know, you hate to see somebody get in there and get hurt, whether it's our responsibility or not.
Well, and I know Cheryl's been trying really hard to, to help him figure this out and try to get him out of there and get him into another place and, and, uh, you know, I, I would, I would definitely talk to her before we did anything and, and I can, I can give her a call tomorrow and just say, "Hey, where are we at? We, we need to do something."
Yeah, 'cause there's actually two issues, one is the owner and the other one is actually the bi- the business.
Right.
Slash building, I guess, but, um, I mean, is she trying to assist him in moving the business to another location?
She was, but I don't, I don't know that, I think she's trying to move him out of the building.
Just him personally?
Yeah, you know, because we, I mean, she's looked at a, a number of different things, I mean, at one point there's a group that was interested in buying a building for him to go into and use, uh, you know, and then we talked about, you know, there is another floral shop in, in town, but there's, you know, that, that situation wouldn't work out if he tried to work with them and yet at the same time, you know, I talked to that floral shop owner and one floral shop in the city of Morris is not enough and they just took it over, you know, so they're, they're trying to get that business to run the way they want it to run, but they're, I mean, the one thing I've always known about, um, economic development is floral shops are needed in every town, you know, 'cause you just think about all the events that require flowers, whether it's weddings or funerals or, you know, celebrations, you know, prom, whatever it is, you know, there's a massive market for that, you know, and, uh, and I think Sweet Lilies will be able to handle a lot of that, you know, because it seems like they have a pretty good handle on what they wanna do, but he does a lot of business and the question is, you'd let him keep doing it in this little corner in that building that's getting ready to fall down on him?
I get a little tired of hearing from people around town, when is that building getting taken care of? I mean, that's the bottom line to me, you know, a business or no business, we're, we're, that's, that's where it's at, that's the business, that's, but, but to have a building that people come up and say, "When is that gonna get?"
It's a, it's a eyesore. And we've been working on this for, what?
A long time.
Five years, six years?
Where then it becomes like, are we gonna do anything or then is that where you say, "Well, we can't do anything 'cause it's his business."
I think it's a good idea that we talk with.
Yep.
Her and, and we talk about it again, 'cause I, I do firmly believe that a, you know, a stern date is in order, um, to get him to move to something safer for himself. He won't do it on his own, so I think it's, you know, that's what I'm concerned about, is his safety in that building. So, uh, uh, let me suggest this then, um, two things, one is, uh, that I go talk, talk to Cheryl and then I'll talk to him, uh, but then also to go back to Aaron and have Aaron drop the necessary, uh, paperwork that we need to deal with if we wanna, uh, take this issue to the district court, 'cause he's gonna have to propose, you know, what action we take to do that and then we can bring it back to the next council meeting and just say, you know, that's probably the best way to do it, just say, eh, what, what are you gonna do, you know, because we're gonna bring it back to the next council meeting and they're gonna decide whether or not they're gonna pursue the next action, which, and, and it doesn't mean that, you know, the day the court beats, you know, that you walk over there and grab them and throw them out the door, it's just, you're gonna get the authority to be able to condemn the place and then deal with it.
Yeah, I'm sure they probably have a realistic timeframe for him to be out, you know, if it got to that point.
I think he knows.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's, I don't think it's a real surprise to him at all, but I agree with Brian, I'm more concerned for his.
Yeah, if you wanna do a motion, directing me to talk, talk to SEIC and, and, uh, the owner and then, uh, directing Aaron to drop the, what the requirements are to take the legal action.
I will make that a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Uh, any other, uh, comments or questions on the city manager report? We have another business set in a budget work session?
So you're, you said you're leaving?
I'm leaving for the rest of the month. What is, how does that fit?
We can do it in November, beginning of November, I mean, we have to do it before December.
Yeah.
When we do our final budget, so. We got a meeting on the noth- what, ninth and the twenty-third, so, you know, we could do.
Do we wanna do it after a meeting or do we wanna do it on a Thursday like we have in the past sometimes?
That seems to work. I'd like, I don't wanna do it following a meeting.
Yeah, it gets to be a long, long time.
Do it at five or something, like a normal meeting.
Yeah. Five fifteen on Thursday, November something?
The eleventh?
It's Veterans Day, I don't know if that matters.
All right, yeah, that's, that matters.
No.
Yeah, I must stay, right?
Do you wanna go a week earlier to?
Yeah, we can do the fourth. Yeah, we could do the fourth. Be back then.
Should be. No guarantee.
It's up to him. We could, we could float it there, you know, unless you want, unless you wanna move to the eighteenth. Yeah, we could do that too. We could do the eighteenth.
That's a pretty light, I don't know if that matters. Yes.
Yeah, of course that matters.
Thank you, Stacy, for the.
I think that's deer hunting, isn't it?
She's like giving us real, real things here.
I think that's deer hunting.
What, what about the sixteenth, Tuesday, the sixteenth?
Yeah, we could do that. Unless there's a planning commission meeting.
Oh, do we know, we don't know that yet?
We don't know, usually we don't know until that Friday, depending on if something came up.
We can set it for the fourth, I'll try to be back.
We can just.
A goal to do.
Goal.
November fourth.
I need to be back by November fourth.
Yeah, well, let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
At five fifteen?
Sure, yep.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody wanna make that, that a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to set a budget work session meeting for November fourth at five fifteen.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. See, I noticed that the, uh, uh, south of town on fifty-nine, I noticed the lights are up on the welcome to Morris sign.
Yep.
Did they get up on all of them?
I think they're, I think they're up on all of them. I know the one out here, they're up.
Yep. I saw on fifty-nine to nor- nine north.
They look great. Yeah, that worked out good.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, that, uh, solar panel on there could even be a little more visible, but it's okay.
Uh, one quick question, uh, when do cell pumps have to be switched over the other way?
November.
November first.
They can.
They can be.
You can put them inside then.
But not until, that's, I guess.
Not until November first.
All right.
They're gonna keep the leaf stump open until well into November, I hope?
I would guess. There's no fence.
Yeah.
So usually people just drop them anyway.
That sign that says, "No, no leaf dumping doesn't work."
I know. Yeah.
Well, the recent rains will be good for the new trees we planted, Jay?
Yeah, for sure.
Rather timely.
Okay, anything else to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.